Broadcast. Hello. The chair.
Okay, so I'll call the meeting to order and you will call Jeremy Stint.
Yeah.
Alden Clark.
Here.
Here.
Charlie Palmasama.
Here.
Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Brian Dalcom.
Here.
Victor is here. Heather Rogers is not. And we have generous. First item of business, we have no public hearings tonight. First item is general business, request for extension for site plan at thirty-six Kobe Farming. Mr. Planning.
Thank you. Is anybody here not familiar with Kobe Farming? It's funny to me because when I first got here was a very big discussion, so I'm just going to show real quick. Just brief context for you. This is not take long at all. So the city's map here just goes around the landfill. So this is the end of Kobe Farming, what used to be Pearl Lane. And at any rate, when I had first started working here, the it was just a closure of a landfill happening at that point. The landowner entity, New Ventures, that owns properties from the Shell Company dissolved. And long story short, working with the D P, we may be partnering together essentially to get to a point where the city is in control and brings out a solar company to come out there and make viable use of the land and do maintenance because unfortunately, where we are, the D P brings out any history, which I can't speak all the details. But there is no essentially leverage or money is what they call the fam account. Money is left to do things from the D P. So whatever leverage points there essentially have lost in the years. And while there was an effort to get a solar company out there, apparently it sounds like there was no tripartite agreement with the D P. Where the D P said, yes, you can get your closure on the landfill landowner. You know, but you're gonna have to commit to doing this other thing. I think they got the impression that was part of the deal, but it didn't sound like it would be mortgaged in any divorceable way. So as soon as the landlord got the post closure agreement, you know, dissolves the company. And so we're trying to get ahead of problems that, you know, and make valuable use of it. And in some way rather than running to problems where we're going to inherit the problems anyway. But we're behind on things like, you know, maintenance and landscaping and things that could, you know, increase the cap. So at any rate, we are, because New Ventures no longer really exists as an entity. We are essentially asking just for mechanically purposes, the board to grant an extension of the permit because it's obviously what makes a lot more sense having previously approved for that parcel of land, a this landfill is bound. But approving a solar array up there, it makes a lot more sense to whatever modifications I'm sure might have in technology in the last year or two. The new party coming in to be attended would essentially just pick up where they left off with the land modification if necessary. But otherwise, use the electricity tie and they understand that they're already made in national grid, they spent some money. They would pick up where they left off with the solar arrays up there. Out of this permit, if there's tweaks needed, we come back to you. But I just want to keep the permit alive for, you know, primarily as what the city's potential future benefit. So.
So. Who owns the property?
It is currently owned by a non-existent LLC.
So I guess I have no problem spending equipment.
No, no, that's quite right. We are only asking you to spend the time. You know, and there's lots of other details and mechanics and things that we're going to deal with along the way. I just was trying to maintain as I'm just typical, you know, what you're thinking about, no problems and what obstacles and what things you're beneficial to deal with. So I realized that, put all that aside. I also have talked to D P about reassignment of rights forgiven, a little bit company that was going to come up to solar and the idea with all that stuff, we're talking legal counsel, and this happened at a consultant come up to it. Because of their expertise, like in L S P, coming out giving expertise about what we should deal with for landfill that we may not flag ourselves because there are certain things in particular landfills. So anyway, some result, I fully acknowledge that. There might be a reassignment of different things as we go along, but mainly just wanted to make sure that there is already a permit in place for specific solar array that fits up there. And it makes sense just, you know, keep that in place for now.
So this doesn't relate to the permit, but what do you see happen? Do you see the city taking the property?
It seems likely to me in some way, shape, or form that we will be taking the property, reacquiring it.
And then at some point, the permit, which has been extended, could be reassigned to a new owner. Is this is the permit?
Well, the department.
New Ventures.
I believe it says the New Ventures on it. Yeah. But.
So I mean, it might have to come back to us just because a new.
Yeah, I'm trying to keep as much of this as stream around as possible. Yeah, I'm not just screwing this guy up any mechanical, it can be all kinds of mechanical things we gotta do it, but I'm just trying to keep.
Sure, I understand. Just trying to try to think ahead.
Yeah.
But, you know, so we might be seeing this again later, later in twenty twenty-five.
I would like to see it in twenty-five. You know, we would, it's more likely that we would see something like some of the they happening the quickest out there. With something, say twenty-six, I would like to basically, well, if to the extent we're gonna be dealing with this, rather get it fully advanced in twenty-five so they can be out there doing their work twenty-six. Because going another, like how many years we add up this adds to our way we are from dealing with maintenance issues out there and assuming we get a tenant. This is where we generate electricity, the junior, so we are maintaining it without the taxpayers here expending funds, which is what's happened. So.
One of the things I remember from, I think I was here when it was originally permitted, I'm not sure.
The solar, you mean?
The solar, yeah, yeah. I just remember the discussion about the number. At that point, we don't think we had residences, people residing.
We did not, no. And there was conversation at the time, I mean, you know, it was flagged by a recycling coordinator myself as we move along. Especially in practice purposes, he said, you know, we have city facilities down there, does it re-agree? And then this came up on the permit, had to be put in some language, properties saying, and we all acknowledged that this facility, this was separate from the landfill, we all knew what that. But.
So what about?
Any thought come into highest and best use for that?
Yeah.
In my view, there's no other possible highest and best use. We had a psych visit yesterday. There, we had a good one because the weather was good, but but the idea of having like you having ball fields like smaller communities, you're putting it aside, that's not that's not the place of rage, you can't get the public out there, there's significant changes to negative work. So that's not really best option. Our best option is getting energy generation, you know, the net zero rules. You know, kind of a bracket, three billion, all that stuff. And then you know, revenues are essentially first starting with maintenance of landfill and revenues we get at the time. So, you know, our goal there is basically to not absorb cost burden of the city, but actually deal with something responsibly. Now, I guess, I don't know, I can't speak to any of the practice really, I just saw the talent of the venture stuff, you know, the D P and the solar array attempt, and then it dissolves. So I end up controlling that process. I just make sure that that's where we're responsible going forward and don't end up with a huge problem with the city essentially landing in your.
So no SpaceX too?
Yeah, we talked about launching pad.
Why not see him bring some of his cheese?
Launching pad and pickleball. It's very steep to lose, you know. Anyway, the general gist is very simple. We're just trying to keep it alive as a basic permit that we've all kind of agreed to what would make sense up there. And then obviously we circle back in mechanics and discussions we have to have and, you know, I'm not sure the timeframe would be just yet. I'm just trying to prepare a basic planner because there's a lot of things that need time to do, so.
Well, any other questions? So.
It was originally permitted in two thousand nineteen, but the files.
There was an extension previously.
Oh, I know we had a previous one, like a year, year.
Twenty nineteen.
So it just stopped when I got.
So I would accept a motion to extension of site plan approval for thirty-six Kobe Farming to January twenty-second, twenty twenty-six.
I approve that we approve an extension. I want for that to up to twenty-two, twenty.
Twenty seconds. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Approval of minutes. This is the bulk of our work tonight.
Three and four.
Three.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five percent. So we're still anxiously awaiting September eighteenth. So we have October sixteenth, November sixth, November twentieth. And I assume that even if somebody wasn't there, they could vote. The approval of minutes.
It, I mean, generally speaking, it's people who have meetings, so.
I was hoping to do it.
Yeah, sorry. I hate to be so.
Okay, so.
If you want the official.
So I haven't, I haven't checked to see who was here and who wasn't, so I trust you all to know that. So minute, first of all, and I've made, I've made comments on all these, so I know the answers. Any comments?
That usually ends up being minutia.
So first of all, minutes of October sixteen. Can somebody make a motion who was present?
I'm looking at we approve the October sixteen minutes.
Okay, hold on. For a second. Do you have a second? Okay, are there any exceptions?
I'm pretty sure, I'm having trouble downloading. I'm pretty sure this is the one of the set.
You were.
Yeah.
So with the exception of Jamie, all in favor moving these minutes? Right? Any opposed? Okay, so. Okay, so. November sixth, twenty twenty-four. I have a motion to approve those. Your changes.
I need that we approve the November sixth minute.
Second, thank you. Was anybody present for that? Okay, care of a little chicken. So all in favor? Any opposed? That's enough. And finally, November twentieth.
Jen, I wasn't.
Jen was. So can I have a motion to approve the November twentieth?
Motion to approve the eleventh question.
All in favor? Second, Jamie second? Okay. Onto the housing production. Andy?
Did everybody have a, hopefully everybody had a chance to review what was sent out. Unfortunately, these things take longer than we'd like to, but we finally got to the point where the edits and requests for clarification, things like that have been incorporated into the new housing production plans. So the plan that we start early this year, the plan is right to the council and planning board. These more of a housing trust, a couple of suggestions, requests for edits and certifications, I think particularly from, thank you. Ian from M B P C and sent back the revised document, a couple of comments, certifications. So hopefully, if everybody has reviewed this and discovered the document, what we're hoping to do is get the planning board's approval to go with the city council's approval that we have. To send this plan to the state. The, obviously, our goal is producing affordable housing, that's the direct action, but this plan is basically a strategic plan to do so. And one of the benefits, we obviously talk in respect to Kmart, is it's step one for being back in safer stead. And then having, you know, either progress per year or only ten percent, which is a big game. So in essence, we want to get this off the state, the climate's holiday, so let's, you know, give them time to review it so we can get ahead of that. The mechanics of the forty B process are moving, you know, and they are moving ahead. They are starting to prepare documents that are ball through inconsistency of what we've seen. Prepping for the eventual Z E A filing, which would be, you know. No, but sometime. Probably early bit next year, we'll see that process unfolding. So when they do some of this stuff. Preemptible stuff. So, but it's all being consistently.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments on the construction?
I have concerns. I think, I think the plan is fine. I'd like to see more information about the conclusions that they, they got from all the data that was presented. See that in some of the, you know, the executive summary points and so forth. So I guess that's fine.
You mean in charge of the way?
What they concluded from the, all the data that was presented about the distribution of houses to number of people.
Sorry, you should turn that to an accurate presentation or is it?
No, just, just, just what they're concluding from and putting, putting forward.
They state some facts.
Yeah.
And then they make some conclusions about those facts, but the connection between the facts.
I see.
I see it's very clear.
I got it. Okay.
That's all. I mean, but I, I, I tend to go along with the housing production plan.
Make a linear, yeah.
Yeah, as I see it. I don't, I don't have much faith that the city council will act on any of these if they do approve it. And given, given all the comments that have come out about increasing the concerns about density and stuff, because in order to have more housing, it means more density. And we've seen them complain about density at Fort Plaza, at Brown School, and the neighborhood and city councils, but that's, that's my editorial comment.
It is recognized and some of those are, there is a direct statute or, not everywhere, for consistency between your planning documents and your latest regulations, that there are some places where that has to happen, but it's not like a almost like.
So as an aspirant, I saw the newspaper where Somerville adopted a new parking restriction for housing development throughout Somerville. An effort to try to increase housing and then leave it to developers to figure out whether or not it makes sense to add an arc here. I'd obviously congregate with it, rather than TA. That's kind of how it started, lead over to other areas. I think it's something that I've actually been, you know, we miss not mentioning because we can address some of these things, but it's something maybe to talk about in the future. You know, maybe, maybe taking the parking area could help to follow this point.
That's actually a great point because that will help for us. And we could be talking a lot of questions again next year, but but we will certainly be talking about split out the most read. It's the same logic, I agree. In, in that, you know, in different balance, taking those, but it's the same logic where you can't get the house above and the density is available without recognizing that walkable place. Right. So, but we always have that debate and we'll tell you, you know, what's that ratio? Is that just following the traditional suburban ratio versus, you know, for a, you know, fortune? Do we prioritize bicycles and, you know, EV charging spaces and things like that, rather than, you know, two spaces per year?
Yeah, a lot of communities are going, are doing a lot of things to encourage housing. It's a big struggle.
Yeah.
So any other comments on the production? I had a, I had a couple that resolved, and I think at this point I'm not pushing too hard, but I just want to highlight a couple of things that I had concerns about. And, and I guess I'm saying I exceed to your wish to move this forward rather than to try to address this.
Imagine. And by the way, I give that right, it's your jurisdiction and laws, so if there's concern, I'll send it back.
But I think, but I think the other thing I'm concerned about is that this draft is a different draft than that city council has already approved. So we don't want to get too far away from what the city council.
Yeah, yeah.
Then you have to send it back to the city council and they might, you know, have some issues.
Yeah, and, and that's the thing too, these procedures and these processes take a long time for different things that we do. And it's often, and then like it starts to get things done when that happens, when everything's relay based on weeks or months between things. But also keep in mind that this plan is also from a recommendations perspective, this is all approximations, right? We don't know every specific project is going to come through the usual channels of zoning, you know, framework, what's going to improve there. Permitting processes that are books, cap projects being approved, programs being funded, but, you know, through the city council grants. All that stuff is still through the usual channels. So, you know, I had the same conversation with the council because there, I'm sure there are some there who are not agreeing with every particular that's in there. And we can go line by line by specific projects and how many units we think are going to happen there and things like that. But we have to show the state that there's a viable plan to do that, what we have to do for affordable housing. We have to have a perceived lower status, and we have to have at least a general direction for those things. I stopped worrying at some point about how finer grain and particulars we worry about, well, because the practical reality I have seen is we're much more effective and we're focused on proactive things we're doing forward, rather than going around in circles over a strategic plan endlessly. And what I've, we had, we're having a similar discussion with the plan because there's always so much you can talk about, you know, sort of the overall concepts. You have to focus on the action items in there, and that's the progress is going to be happening. So you do want to repeat the process of these, these master plans or strategic plans. That's important to revisit them, to update them, you know, to make sure they make sense. But I also, we have seen us, you know, sometimes, this is communities, not just people, like get in so much in the weeds and the endless debate about those things that we're not even like partisan or anything. So I'd rather prioritize our overall bandwidth on the actions that can do things where, where it's practically, it's practically involved, you know. But to the extent that there's any change or revision, that's appropriate to do. And, you know, we can circle back and say, look, you know, there's still concerns about this. Can you make these adjustments before the board takes it, but in general.
So just.
So I guess the question is, how long, how often is this playing issue?
Every five years, every year. Yeah.
So I think the aspiration for the next five years, we get all the details, looks reasonable. Because we don't know what's going to happen through years economically, we don't know. You know, so it's almost like you're trying to prevent something that you can't even see versus saying, okay, the process has a plan. Right? So this would be.
And this is sort of a general guy.
That's correct. It's, it's understood and it's very, well understood. Oh, really? I mean, these are strategic, like any, it's like a master plan even. I mean, we continue to recommend things today that the city had recommended years ago that are common themes, right? Historic character, you know, regulations to do with, you know, compatibility, you know, you know, water fund, you know. And they're all, there are things that come back repeatedly. So that's pretty common. The tools and techniques are really a lot the same tools and techniques because we, as was Paul, we have the same tools and techniques, you know, typically, you know, funding programs, constructing things, regulating, you know, things, requiring something of a developer, you know, incentivizing a developer, et cetera. So, yeah, it's, it's an approximation at the best, but no plan across the world will ever have everything in the plan in a minute exactly as it's in there. Or, you know, and, and some things, I'm sure if we had to likely debate, you know, the council for the same reason. We'd have to break some of various other things because understandably, people say, I can't, I can't support this ethic. And that can go on indefinitely. So that's where I, I try to balance up as a practical reality. I'm an idealist from like long range planning perspective, but I try to balance that against the practical reality of what municipalities can do and what's effective in the field and so forth. So that's the reason why I, you know, in a particular way, am not for spending further time on that sort of finer grain piece of it. Because I'm not going to, I don't necessarily view that we're going to get a whole lot of productivity out of that proportion is what it is. It's not that I don't wouldn't be spending reasonable time on, you know, further, you know, in the weeds, just that, it's just that balance.
Just to follow up on Rick's comment as far as the versioning of this and what the city council has seen, have they seen the corrections that Ian made?
So while I wanted to circle back with them after you had, because I don't want to do this multiple times. And I also wasn't sure if I could get what their schedules were going to be, you know, they didn't say it's season or what, but I didn't want to necessarily do that process twice. It's actually probably easier to do discussions here once or twice than it is to do discussions there once or twice again I close out. So I'd rather know that everything has been somehow incorporated or addressed or covered somehow here before trying to close a loop there or make sure that, you know, so.
So I, so I had after all my question, Ian responded to most of my questions. I had three things that were remaining. Again, I don't want to recommend that we change it, but I just want to raise them as something to think of. One is, is a strategy that says and it's kind of.
Do you know a page? Because I can.
It's page thirty-two.
Okay.
And it's, it's out of plan of ease. It says explore possible zoning parameters or allow two family structures by right and R two and R three zone digit. That just seemed very bleak to me. And I would, you know, I would just say, allow two family structures by right and R two and R three zone.
I got you.
You know, it's just, it's, it's more, it's so hesitant and so it doesn't really tell us what we're going to do. So I, it was something I was hoping we could make stronger language, but you know, his response is, if this is the desire of the majority of the planning board, I'll make that change. We want to discuss that. It was just something to, to think about the more more forward thinking in our zone, rather than being so.
And again, in deference to, you know, best practice and all that, I, I, you know, I'm fine basically saying, look, it's a one, it's a one line edit here. This is not hard to.
Yeah, but I think it's the kind of thing that might bring up, I think it's the kind of thing.
Understood.
That the city, that the city council would say, well, we're not going to mind.
Understood.
So I think, yeah, we didn't have a chance to talk about that. It just came to us as a.
And that's about the point, yeah.
The second thing, again, this is stuff that I highlighted and I think are important to think about. There's something called the residential exemption in, for, for property taxes, which about maybe two dozen communities in the state are taking advantage of. And what it does is it basically lops off bottom section of your value. So it basically shifts tax burden on the lower value properties. And mostly it's, mostly properties on Cape Cod, properties in the, in communities in Cape Cod, communities in the Berkshires, I think, and a bunch of communities around Boston. And it's the idea of finding, oh, the lower lower resourced people homeowners. Again, I think we should think about it. It was a, it was a policy. It would be nice to have it in there. It's something to think about, but again, I don't want to, I think I want us to think about it. Don't mess up the whole, to this plan.
Rick on that point. Some of the comments, public comments noted that. Taxes going up. Seen in Brooklyn, Boston, where they do have essential exemption, but it's across. Well.
Yeah.
Who loves his residential exemption, but you don't really need it, you know? So he gets. So if we do address it, I would say, maybe it's tied to.
They can't do this.
Yeah, that's, it's a very specific. The authorization, the statutes are usually limited, and so you don't have the flexibility to do it unless it's codified in the statute.
So it's across the board.
There's more, it's like there's individual statutes for these different types of programs that have been added over the years, but it has to be authorized by the legislature, not modified outside.
So you can exempt the first five hundred thousand dollars of value to property taxes. So somebody who has a, yeah, like I do, a seven hundred thousand dollars, you're only paying two hundred thousand. Or somebody who has a one point two million dollar, they're much, much more. So it'd be shifting from, from one level to another. But it's something that you need to, you need to think about this. It's a way to, we've been, there's so much debate about trying to split the tax rate between residential and commercial. And it's clear that it doesn't work for a place like this. But the, but shifting it from the lower income or lower valued properties to higher valued properties is at least some way to think about. I think, I think if we're, if we're concerned about the older people who are people who don't have many resources and you know, their properties are, they're going to be forced out of their properties, they're going to be redeveloped to a much bigger structure, that kind of thing. It's something to think about. But again, not trying to do it, I just want to highlight. And then the third thing that I.
So you're volunteering for more meetings than twenty-five?
Yeah. And the third thing is I just thought that the the plan on page thirty-five is unrealistic. And I know that the Affordable Housing Trust is okay with it. But to think that we're going to do thirty-two units on Enpro next year just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, by the way, and, and this is, it's funny because this sort of, it's a general theme came up and it comes up with this table, right, approximately. Sorry, I don't, I'm having problems with the pagination of videos. We, we know that the table, for instance, there are a couple of things you can say, well, that's not a sequence because we think it's more realistic, this will come first. But it's also you have to show the state like, you know, making progress these years. So again, that's why I encourage us to look at it more generically about, you know, approximating what types of projects where range or ballpark of number of units and feasibility as opposed to the very specific things. I would fully acknowledge that, you know, it may be very likely that this one's going to go faster than that one.
Well, I just don't think we're going to, I don't think one's going to go faster, another fantastic, we're not going to make progress nearly as fast as we savor it.
Yeah. It was in Brown School, it's currently controversial.
Sorry, Brown School is not controversial anymore, so we're all set.
It's all set.
It's all set. It's going to be twenty-nine units.
I missed that one newspaper.
Hasn't been in the paper, hasn't been in the paper yet.
Yeah, I thought of last night's meeting.
Yeah.
I was going to mention, because you, you would be getting the psych plan approval special permit, but you would be getting it next year.
Well, first we have to rezone it.
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, sorry. That's, sorry. And that's what I wanted to mention, but we'll be having another zoning hearing. So we'll be several zoning hearings, but we're going to spring, like we're going to have zoning hearings, so it'll be an active time for zoning stuff.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, let's, let's uh, let's act on this one, then I want to say something about it.
Yeah.
Schedule, so, um, nobody has any other complaints? They're picking, um, I'd be happy to accept a motion to approve the housing production plan for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
I'll, I'll move to approve the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine, as a good idea.
Second?
Second, okay. All right, any further discussion? If not, then all those in favor? Your opposed? I'm sorry for taking up your time, it's just that.
No, no, no. Toward here.
Is there, I'm sorry, can I, not to reopen it, but is there a place where comments can be tracked? To now and the next one?
That's a good point.
Just um, sorry, between the diverse version versus by year.
Yeah.
Just an ongoing list of stuff to consider, we'll pick it up in four years' time, you know?
Yeah, I mean, so each plan does um summarize, and frankly, was more fond of a prior version that we had some years back. Uh, but this one was rolled in sort of like a, a original template that was being done as part of this process, right? So anyway, um, the, there is a recap essentially of like, what have we done, you know, since the last, that's difficult. Um, but I guess your point, um, you know, we can do differently, we can do that in different ways. But each plan like this is supposed to, you know, this is what we've done, you know, previously since the prior plan. Um, these are things we still need to act on or do. Sometimes there's a repeat of recommendations previously, maybe this thing didn't really get done, but what we did rather.
I don't know, there's like, there's, there's like bolted work products that could recognize, and they wouldn't be just this issue, there's other Yeah. types of projects, like, there's a lot of things actually brewing, so when you're kind of citing the city could be behind, uh, you know, consolidate or collect ideas, I don't know. I know that, I know there's other people in the state talking about similar ideas, so just, I don't know if it's reached the planning department and all, perhaps.
Uh, sorry, I just wanted to make sure I understand.
That co-remnants.
Co-remnants, yeah.
I got all my platform today.
Yes, to kind of record, record, I, ideas for
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Future times, so.
Yeah. I, I'm all in favor of that. Um, uh, again, I just find, what I find is, and I'm all, we actually tried a platform like that at one point with the zoning project, and it didn't it wasn't, it didn't like flush out as like at the time, this is like years back, so why not just flush out and just now, you know, but um, but we're always gonna be coming back to the same tools, the same resources, typically the same locations that we're talking about with land use or capital projects and funding programs and so forth. So at the end of the day, they just, I agree with that one hundred percent, but it just had the caveat again that we're often always going back to the same tool locks of things that we can work on. So the ideas will be common themes, often be very the same things. We'll get, sometimes get a new suggestion that wasn't like a requirement of a certain area, but they're not necessarily very shattered changes. We could put housing here, we could fund this program, you know? So.
But I think the, the idea of just, just having a place to record thoughts that come up as people are dealing with processes and, you know, I'd love to have something that records my thought about the residential exemption, and if somebody could look at that, you know, it's, it takes somebody to actually bring it up. But, you know, people don't think of it.
Yeah.
You know, and then maybe others, you know, the two family, looking at the zoning districts, looking at the zoning districts.
Yeah, I mean, is this public, are you, is this public?
Yeah, yeah.
That's pretty And we have a platform where people can sort of like a free, sort of free for all, and sorry, you have to decide like, what does the platform allow, what's it worth, well, how do we gather data, how does it pile it, how do you access it, you know, and how do you translate that into something else?
But you might, but you might use master plan and categories, you know, housing, economic development, transportation, open space, you know, natural resources.
Yeah, we can certainly do this.
You know, here, we're looking for ideas for
Yeah.
People should, what we should be looking at in our next drive, because you're gonna be looking at a master plan.
I don't, we're in a, next year, we're gonna be starting up, it's another thing, we're gonna be starting up another master plan process.
So, so we need to
Exactly, I think they're even better candidates.
Yeah.
No, that, that actually, to me, is a perfect time to do that, and actually, that's the kind of thing I would love to do, we can associate it with the master plan.
Yeah.
Um, I just, I guess my, I, I just, um, just I'm gonna think of, from an effectiveness perspective, I think that we're gonna give more productivity out of the specific actions, like the planning board making, you know, discussion early next year makes a specific recommendation to the council. Or the council is, you know, sponsoring something simultaneously, but if not, is here heard the communication with the planning board, and then there's a sponsorship of something accordingly. That might be more effective the other day. I definitely like the idea of piling the ideas and using online uh as a tool to engage the community. I actually see more benefit in the engagement, the dialogue that I do with the, um, you know, the proportion of specific benefits, probably like ten percent of those would be great, you know, recommendations that are very like new in some way. You know, ninety percent of those will be the same recommendations or categories of things we've heard before. But to me, the benefit on that ninety percent is more about the fact that the community is having a dialogue about it, and it becomes educated about what our options are, right? So, but to your point, and that's what the initial engagement initiative was, that, um, that, uh, chat was what
The, you know, another example, we went through the whole accessory work. No, short term, I get this confused, the whole short term revenue debate, which is for two years, four years away, and I got, somebody sent me an email today saying, well, what about allowing B and Bs and farms to help support, you know, local farms? I said, well, we've talked about that, and it wasn't something that anybody wanted to do, but, uh, you know, this is something to think about, you know? That's just the idea that's hanging out there. It's not attached to anything, but it could be, if it were there, you know, it could be part of our open space, um, goals to preserve, help preserve open space by providing more income to farmers, you know, could be part of economic development goal by providing for tourism, that kind of bit, so. There's just no place to hang, and that, that's your point. There's no place to hang, which would be nice, if nice of a place to just to keep a record of things, because we are gonna be going into that planning process, you know?
That's a fantastic example, too. Like, that's a real specialized comment that if enough people heard it, they'd be like, wow, that's great, but no one would think, very few people would think of that unless they were presented with it
Yeah.
on some platform or heard it. And it's really, good ideas like that are usually dependent on the one person who understands it.
Yeah.
But a plat, online platform or something where it's kind of retained, you know, preserves
It's like a brainstorming. I think we should just, you know, maybe think about, I know, yeah, you've got tons of stuff to do, Andy, so.
No, I, I, it's one of the ideas. I'm in favor of it, no. Uh, it, 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 and this is something that you guys unfortunately don't deal with, I'm very busy, but I routinely see and have to deal with the fact that we don't always have the resources to do all the things that people want us to do. And so the practical reality is I have to flag when, when I concede that something will not be able to get to, we'll be able, will not be able to get to it, but the money will not be appropriated, you know, from use of the platform, or whatever it is. Um, I, again, I'm trying to be efficient so we can get stuff done, and there's not routinely these discussions depending on the format, there is not the recognition that the resources are not there. This is a function of government. We have created as a cross the nation, you know, it's not just a new report. We have an inordinate amount of process that goes on with things, and we cannot take on new things unless we have the resources to do the existing things. That is not acknowledged, the process is every department in the city, you know, public services, I'm sure, has the exact same issue, we just gotta tie that up. So.
So, um, you want, we'll be talking about story of you.
Yeah, I, last week or two, I have not been able to push that back, so, uh, so I have to circle back. Uh, but we are gonna, we're gonna be pumping out information to you in terms of the consultant scope, dates, they're gonna be meeting with us, it's gonna be a lot of them, we're gonna be, that's gonna be a Zoom. Um, we're gonna invite city councils to come to our meeting as the plan now. Um, this is probably due to the discussion about how many meetings people are, you know, expecting or participating in some way. Uh, until we get to the formal version, say, and it's spring, summertime, where we say, here is the deliverable, where we think we've got zoning based on this modeling that we think makes sense for the character of that area could be. Um, we will then essentially be more formal with the city council about that, through their estimation of, like, sponsors, individuals, and so forth, but we're gonna try to invite them to come to our meeting as an effort to do it with them, because the likelihood of us being able to get other days on the calendar and um, stuff provided through the formal proceedings that they do, maybe, that's just, they're too cumbersome for us to do, but I guess we'll get it done. So I think here, uh, we will invite, we'll give them an update, we'll fill out the schedule, we'll invite them, hopefully, as many as we can as possible and chime in. Um, they will be obligated to, obviously, but we will be able to proceed along and get to some we feel, but hopefully it will be, uh, everyone on the same page enough that piece we have at the end will be something they can have sponsorship, they can debate, even if there's, all right, someone's gonna hold up a little piece of it, at least the majority of it, you know, would be able to be
So, so here's my thought. Um, you know, we know you're gonna be coming with story of, you know, if you're coming with signings, probably gonna be coming, maybe, with revisions to the ADU stuff, maybe, depending on the state of the conditions.
Uh, well, so I'm not expecting, there's not a need right now to return the planning board, although I did want to mention that, so.
But I'm just thinking that we, just say, I'm just wondering whether we're gonna need to revisit our spring ones to say, because it says doesn't it just say right now that the half mile exemption is, the half mile, maybe
Oh, yeah, sorry.
We have to revise the zoning, we have to
That's true, but keep in mind that we have, the planning board has exposed its hearing, it provided a recommendation to council.
Right.
So unless we're re-advertising, and the council is proceeding along, it's taking into account now the new guidance and new H C, which one I must mention.
I guess I just wanted to say, I don't know whether the city council's going to move ahead in January, or whether they're gonna wait till March or something. But if they waited till March, we're gonna have to
That's exactly right.
So what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, we're gonna have a bunch of planning work to do this time. We're gonna have at least several rounds of zoning public hearings coming. And I'm just wondering whether you might consider, I don't know what this is, whether the bad ways to look at this path, but whether you might consider having one month, one meeting a month to look at applications, and another meeting a month that we look at planning and zoning, and we
Focus.
Put them all between, and we don't mix them together, because that would be, I think that would be really
Idea must be able to focus the entire evening on one.
Or, or, or multiple, just not, not kind of mix up the applications with the planning.
Of that, I mean, I know in some cases that the request might be coming more than, you know, this, but a third meeting this month, you know, I mean, that's
Yeah, but I think if you, if you have a month between meetings
Yeah.
where you talked about planning and zoning issues, that gives everybody enough time to make some progress. You know, the kind, we wouldn't want to have the consultant come every two weeks and
Well, it's also sometimes that's not enough time for both to do some modifications and for us to get it and review it, and then be, you know, because you want to get it a week in advance. So I'm, I mean, I'm solely minimal that, do you want, is there a consensus on the board that you, because we can work in the office to look at our dates and work at applicants and all that.
Are we allowed to do that?
Sure, as long as we're meeting our statutory deadline for occasions, which, you know, other than, we might have to make, other than that, it's great issue, right? So that's kind of more up to you. Uh, the only other thing I would say with that is, it's not, well, you should say that, I know that, um, typical experience, there are some consultants or applicants who will say, I'm really frustrated that I can't get
Yeah.
two weeks, and that will be, you'll stop aside at that point, but do you want to add back on the statutory?
A lot of planning boards only meet once, so, you know, you know, so I'm saying, those, those applicants, they may be used to getting, you know, faster
Yes.
But they don't, they don't deserve it.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I, will you tell us what you want to do there, we'll, uh, we'll take the schedule and then, we'll just let you know.
Certain applicants would really like to be close to us.
Does anybody else have thoughts on that? Is there anybody on the same, is everybody on the same page, or we try to work accordingly, or, or
Well, related thought, there's so much coming up, is it, we've talked about some committees occasionally, when there's just a lot going on, is it, I'm just beginning to start thinking about that as a mechanism to
Yeah.
divide and conquer.
You know, would be, I think it might be helpful, actually, and, um, evenings is hard to absorb more committee meetings and things. Frankly, because I held like three or four meetings last week, and the council meetings, your meetings, it's just, there's no way to really add on anymore. Um, but with Mr. Abbott, mostly, for instance, daytime meetings, where particularly where you could patch it out in person or be Zoomed to allow us to continue to work with the consultant in between meetings, that would be extremely beneficial.
Right.
Uh, some of you have already, you know, so you could be available somewhere, that would be helpful, and that would be a small group, obviously, but if we get to a review that could do that on some of these things, uh, that would help us to get some feedback from you, some of you at least, you know, proceeding along and working between.
That makes a lot of sense. I, I, I guess I'm curious how we see the process just story of
So, there's different ways that there's a consultant that we've selected, we have the finalized contract, because it's been disagreement with that. So they, this is the, so they, the consultant I want to work with, they are better with, uh, the visualization piece, I think, more particularly here than and, and they're more, and it's just work where they work on than the details and ways of the language or something, like here, this, to codify that, you know, development, you know, scheme, that mass and that model, what happens in neighborhood over there, this is zoning right for that. They have, it's partly based on what it costs to pay the consultants, what they give you for floor, so much time, as you know, spending these things. The available budget that we have on the grant, we don't have any other sources of funding that are appropriated to be able to have that grant. Um, trying to get the work that's done, that's necessary to visualize what could happen there, is extremely beneficial to us, because I find, and we'll repeat this on different, you feel differently, but we oftentimes get in the weeds on language, and people don't have the ability to say, right, you know, from the start point, we have consensus of what we want to achieve. Um, and it helps, I think, with the tail end, because if we start developing zoning for something, but we don't have anything to represent visually what that is, it's really hard to translate for the average person, why they should adopt, why the council should adopt new zoning, and why they shouldn't oppose it, because it involves new housing density and so forth. If they have the visualizations to see what that area could become, I think the knee jerk we actually often have, which is any new housing growth and density is a bad thing, you know, opposition that immediately becomes, you know, obstacle. The visualization tool could be extremely helpful here. So the conversation that I have had essentially is, um, prioritizing that as a resource for them, us helping to work more on the language part of that, to codify that, is sort of, right, this is what we want, this is what we should achieve that. Um, rather than prioritizing the time, the time of the consultant directly into the language of zoning, we're having done some of that.
And what, what is the vehicle of visualization? Define visual, is it SketchUp, is it Massing?
Yeah, I think of it as like, like a, kind of like, a little bit like we do with one problem, that's like SketchUp modeling of scale, massing, um, you guys color coding, like, when it uses or, you know, first floor, active region.
Planning diagram.
Planning diagram schematic. No, we do want some of the, I guess, it's a bit low level, you're talking, but we do want some detail, we want the angles, we want different mass assessments, we want to show at the ground level a bit, like, what do we look like at Stray Avenue? What do we look like at Low Street, what do we, you know, in some, one section of Stray Avenue, of course, the highway might continue to look like it does, but further down, we can still make it look more like us. Yeah, so we'd start with the massing, and then they'd be able to give us some renderings, or, um, the way that they do their, their rendering drawings. The way that a human would feel like it is what I think what you're trying to get at, because I definitely want to include those, I don't want to give just a wire mesh mass modeling to people. I want to be able to show what that scale is, but I don't, that's inadequate to me, and actually is a bad tool sometimes, because people think that that blockishness is just period again. And what they need to see is, you know, the added articulation of windows, frustration, you know, first floor, because of differentiation of the floors and all that kind of stuff, so um, the kind of stuff we love about that town. So I, I do think it's really important that we have not only the overall scale mass that we agree on, because the Harvard Kennedy School study, for instance, was, you know, well, there's a high, you know, scale, there's a medium scale, there's a low scale, and we're gonna clearly have that debate about density and height, and that's always gonna happen. Um, and that could be, you know, difficult for advancing the zoning, but the renderings of mass, and in particular pedestrian feels, I think is more important, I think it's more important at the end of the day, but you have to be able to show what the overall asking is for the area of the neighborhood. So I, I want, we want to be able to get visualizations so that the zoning process you know, language, and we can't visualize what it could be, and, um, I, I do, you know, any kind of housing, which is immediately as
How would a meeting like this be good to those?
So they, the idea is they walk through high, medium, low scenarios, right, where they're starting, what is based on their urban design experience, and these are their common themes. Uh, but they start with that, they get our feedback, we go from there, we're also giving them, we're, we've been, to this, this some of our thoughts and what we think makes sense for a given area, the type of, um, you know, mass and interpretation or scale, which things, which areas of that neighborhood or area that we think work or don't work, we have to give that feedback as well. I frankly, think we have to take into account, we're restricted, it's like, we're not gonna go right near the off branch of the highway, unfortunately, directly, so we're gonna have wide names there, at least in some degree, but, um, but further away, you have the easier it becomes to, let's just like control mass CT and bring it, scale it in, you know, bump out, so like, easier to do. But, um, but this is part of the issue, too, is they permanently use this also in this way, so it's easier for them to catch in and devote more time to our process, new meetings than if we're devoted. Um, I'm comfortable with that myself in a lot of ways, I'd rather have the tools more. Or can I talk a little bit? What for, do, because that's been part of the debate, too, the, you know, the response back, well, you know, you have the money, you the response back, well, you know, you have the money under the entire scope, right? It'll be a hundred thousand dollars to do the rendering, you know, and modeling, you know, this kind of stuff and have us, you know, and budget, and I just want to get some of that. It's about being the visualization and the zone that effectuates that.
Do you know what your budget is?
It's fifty thousand.
Do you have fifty thousand? I thought you peeled something off.
Well, we, we peeled ten off, but I'm hoping still to be working with the water sewer division to have that accommodate, because to me that's a city by issue generally, so I'd rather have that just be, uh, there and I.
Get back fifty.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, um, but that hasn't sort of completely, because that's also a discussion. So, um, right now I can at least speak directly to the committee and then we can add ten in there.
So the consultant was gonna come in with.
I think they're gonna have a new worry, Fortish, how to start a brand to it. Well, no, I, I want to have a kickoff. No, there should be a kickoff where we're giving them insight into what we're thinking and we thought what we think would make sense there. But we do need essentially them to be, you know, coming back and saying, all right, we're hearing this. Do you have a different vision of my dude? I'll be great. If you want to. If you want to comport out some examples, so you can, is it, is your concern that you're worried about the product they deliver won't represent what's great for it? All right. Does Dodson Associates, they're Western? Doesn't blinker now.
So I've worked a bunch of projects, but they're not doing computers.
They're not, that's the thing is, I want them to do a little bit of that, but I'm not as, I'm not concerned that that's.
Because that's not really their.
That's not my specialty. No, I think they would use that as a base to set up for, oftentimes they actually do a very good job with hand drawings that are so good that they represent what's there, they're gonna do it based on the perspective rendering.
So there's a, there's a, there's a, their original document that they did that they come so much of their reputation from was, it's called the Connecticut Valley Design Plan. And it's, it's really, it was done probably in the mid eighties, maybe early eighties, and, um, then they did a big project for the Regional Plan Association around New York City. Very thick report that we have. There was, it's all, but they, their, their standard, at least back then, their standard way of looking at things was here's the existing conditions, here's what could happen with build out of the existing zoning, and here's a different kind of a different kind of build out that is better, and then you design the zoning around that, then the kind of building. And they did work for us here in Newburyport in two thousand and five on the old solid pasture areas, train station area, which eventually led, I mean, that's one of the earliest things that eventually led to the smart growth district. Talked about concentrating, developing around the train station, didn't follow that, that, that smart growth district didn't follow the approach that we talked about in the, maybe it was called the strategic management plan. But, um, it was kind of the earliest visualization of what could happen and also thinking about having more development intensity in business compared to what the rest of the. And then they, um, I've worked with them on a project in Worcester and a project in South County, Rhode Island, same type of thing, looking at existing developing patterns, where things were going, if we didn't make a change, and what kind of change we might make.
Showing a better form that can resolve the current regulations and how these, you know, proposed changes would effectuate this visualization of what that streets game could be, which is, I think, Newburyport thing, maybe sort of that is what we want to make sure.
So we can show you examples of their prior work.
Yeah.
So you get a sense of what the kind of kind of stuff they. Again, I can certainly give you some links.
And so again, I just want to make sure I understand, you know, people might have concerns as well. I mean, um, the concern of the hearing is we want to make sure that this consultant can do a good job of representing, like, for instance, I had the conversation comes up repeatedly about, um, like downtown, the Lewis Building, which is a very good part of the one there. That's a very good recent introduction to the Merrimack Street section. I think everybody that's spoken to has said that and seems to feel that way. I can tell. Um, and to me, that's the type of work I would want to get. There is, there are various different drawings, examples, but that I've seen over the years that are not, you know, there'd be like a bastardization of, you know, Newburyport. And so I guess if the concern is there, I definitely agree that we want, you know, renderings and examples of what, you know, is going to happen there, it's selling the resulting, finding the result to represent Newburyport. I think Stray Avenue should represent, represent Newburyport and just anywhere.
Man, I sent you an example. Develop as part of the R. And what I liked about it, it's a little different. But what I like about it is very clear about S four. What is it that I need to accomplish? I had set back whether it's open space, what's the ask for it, what the goals, they were very clear about that, men and that. You know, what, what would be allowed? I think that's really to be part of this process and ultimately our so that's a little dip. I agree, I agree. It's just, it's just different. But I, I think it's really
Agreed, agreed. I think, yeah, I think that's important because it should be in the framework of zoning management, there's no section that's do there. It's part of what explains people why we're doing the changes. Think the visualizations are generally helpful because to me, it seems like even though we always get that objection to just any residential development, it gets to be happening at all. When people see what that could actually accomplish by adding residential lighting, you know, shops or, um, that type of something, making more walkable, like the parking lots, you know, things like that. Stacking the parking bigger, where, you know, I just put out in all the surface. Um, that's, I think, helps to mitigate and address, you know,
Just as, as I listen, as I listen, you know, when you're hiring professional service, there's always that back and forth, you know, you, you say you want something. I think that should be as detailed as we could. They're gonna come back and give a proposal that says, this is what I heard you ask for. This is, right, so that we don't go through the iteration of them coming up with something, presenting it and then saying, no, we don't if you want more of this and less of that. So I think that's the process I'm trying to.
That's right, yeah. They, they, they take our feedback, they codify it and they come back. I think the, the point that I would make, I guess, is that I have confidence, I think you're right, but I have confidence in their ability to align with what Newbury needs here. Um, so I, I'm already there in terms of feeling like they're capable of doing that. To me, it's then, like you said, they come in with an initial, you know, here's what we've been starting to play with, you know, it's a little bit of this, a little bit of that, a little bit of options here. And we give them feedback and then they come back and provide it based on all the feedback that we are giving them. So I think it's exactly like you're describing. It's just that I have confidence that they will start with something that's reasonably involved, or even not something that's totally off the map.
No, and and I appreciate that. That's how they got to be in consideration. I guess what I'm saying is that position paper to them, it's a cycle that goes through an industry of all parts, right? We, someone asked us to do professional services work. What we say is, what does it get like? Oh, what's the scope? What's, what, what is your intent? And then we come back with a proposal that says, based on what you told us, this is what we're gonna do, this is how much it costs, here's the interim milestones we're gonna present. It saves a step. Because saves the step of them putting hard work into it, creating something and then getting the true intention. So the question is, how do we get that at the beginning? How, how, how does, how does that get documented to them before you hire them? Not out here.
Right.
You're trying to say, at what point do you bring the consultant in? Is there some preliminary discussion within this group to develop a point of view?
Correct.
Basic planning criteria that we've been passed along from the services. Because often, because oftentimes the first part of our fee, if I'm operating professional services is eaten up in that cycle of, oh, now that's what you're really. It's what you do on an hourly basis.
Are you saying, are you saying that you want the consultant to come in before they're under contract or then once they're under contract?
The proposal phase, it's like, like, how do you hire someone? If I was gonna hire someone professional services, like, what I would say is, as the owner, I would put on paper what I was expecting and what I hoped to get out of whether it be aspirations of what, what I'm asking for.
Right.
We issue that today.
That's the consultant scope that we give to the, the consultant and it goes in the contract. It, it's, it's not fully understood here. There is an exorbitant amount of process, including procurement processes that have to be followed. We do not have the ability to do that through the planning boards, meeting schedules.
Perfect. So in that, I think what, I think what the discussion is, is in that, how do we put that information into the procurement process?
That's why I have been asking, you know, or your input on what you want to see here, including, you know, the Bob's back in your comments. If there's any process things, the manner in which it's exchanged, et cetera, I have, to the extent that I might have preconceived notions of what the works there, what doesn't, what can work into the budget, you know, but let me know. That's why I'm asking. That's why I've been saying, you know, look at the zoning that's there today. Tell me what you want to see. Including, I would add to that, tell me if there's process or a way that you want to see the deliverables, so to speak, from them or um, the way in which the first kickoff meeting goes and whatnot. I just don't think that there's any way that we can do the process of looking to, um, various different consultants and prior to hiring them and finish that process and still do get something done.
Well, that's what we're talking about right now. We're, we're talking about the process we use and that's the input we're given, right? It's not.
Right. So my point is, tell me what you want and, right? That's what I'm saying. If you know what you want, tell me.
Uh, maybe the way to bridge this would be, do you have a template for what you're gonna, how you're gonna procure this service?
Yeah.
So maybe we circulate that and we can add to it.
Can we give a deadline to that so that, um, just so, because again, um, what I'm always calling it, just the, the process that that never ends because it means, well, I'm waiting for someone else to finish their process. I can't finish the process in my end, so.
No, no, it's, it's an ask and answer thing, right? If you say, I need, in the next two weeks, I need your feedback.
As also, yeah, we can agree that.
Yeah, our first subcommittee.
Well, I was gonna say, that's the other thing too, like, you know, if, if everybody's passionate about it and I, it's like I said, everybody, everybody can comment, or I can have some committee and I can send out those folks, we could do a combination of, you know. I just would love to make sure that whatever, it's not like, folks won't feel like after, like, if we get to that, like, people won't feel like well, I, I was only able to give comments three or four weeks later and I missed the ability to get into the cycle because it's already been pushed out based on input. Um, I'm sorry, but I can't like hold up for every single process because immediately we get, again, and.
We're not suggesting that type of, what we're suggesting is, you, you're either gonna get input at the beginning.
Yep.
Or you're gonna get it halfway through.
Yeah.
When the consultant says, hey, I'm halfway through my budget and you want me to make all these changes. And, you know, some of us that have been on the other side say, okay, but boy, that would have been nice to know when to begin. Right, that's, that's. Fifty thousand dollars is not a lot of people.
It's not, it's not a lot of money.
Want to make sure that the process is moving forward efficiently and it's moving forward in a direction that we want to see it going. If you want to get through all the things that will say, you know what, this really isn't looking.
Yeah.
So I, I, I really think it's a some kind of discussion amongst us. See this.
So I will send out and get them started. Thank you. I will send out, see what I have on that. For your view, you can all comment on that. I will take into account the best of my ability, um, anything I can there. I definitely appreciate that. I think that's extremely important. Um, I will have to say, you know, here's the endpoint where I can take input, you know, it's two weeks out, I can't wait any longer, you can move on with it. Um, I agree with that one hundred percent. I would appreciate though, because we are talking about it right now and it had, what the theme we talked about in terms of resoning. Any feedback, given that you, you know, you've participated in processes like this before, any thoughts you already have about how you'd like it presented? If there is, you know, you've already set examples of offices, but we're starting to set them, but if there's a type of rendering, for instance, like the method by which the rendering is shown, the drawing and the graphic, for instance, that gets the message across, there's an example of that that you think is a good example of that. Having that in mind is helpful because one, it's not only something that can go into scope, where there's examples of that that could be in the scope, but it's also further than wanting to design process. Those can be shown to the consultant. So to your point, they don't come back and give us, we don't even talk at all. They've had at the outset some examples of what we think is involved.
I, I, I was thinking more as I listened to Bob, I was thinking more what goes into there, not, not how it's presented back to us. I mean, that's their professional, um, methodology. We can't tell them, maybe we got to do this, we got to do it a certain way. But Charlie, I agree with you. Maybe this is a subcommittee. Maybe this is, um, people with energy level or, you know, or interest level, rough it out, show it to everybody else. Doesn't have to take a lot of time. We can kick it around the next meeting, everyone nod their head around, thanks to it, and you're off running. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a hurdle we're trying to create.
Do, do folks feel comfortable doing it as a subcommittee just so we can, we can keep working or do, do you want to do it as a board? I just know it's so I can plan ahead with meetings. That's all I need to look at dates that we'd be working with, so. Would we be able to do something as a subcommittee between now and the next planning board meeting or would you want to bring it back to the next planning board meeting? I guess, how many people are passionate about it?
One is that participating in some subcommittees, I think they're way more effective to getting into really many very details than this forum.
I agree.
And I think as long as we designate the people that we trust have the skills up for that subcommittee.
Agree.
Then the rest of us can kind of say, we hired, we hired people on our team that we trust. We're gonna pretty much go with their recommendation unless we see some really serious fatal plot, which is unusual, like, like, we give them a lot of power to basically influence us to say this is right.
But we keep coming back to the board every time and giving an update with each meeting. I think giving an update.
Only they say you need to, but it can be super fast and efficient if we like to commit.
If, if anybody's not on that smaller group, there's somebody, I don't want anybody to feel like, well, you know, I, because that's, then that brings back to the question, should we have it as a board that, you know, I'm comfortable with a small group, it's faster for me to be able to work with a small group, but.
I'm comfortable knowing, just for one person, if I didn't get selected for committee, I'm, I'm lucky if I get my comments in. I'm out, I might know one of the committee members and give them a comment, but I'm not anticipating I get like a lot of personal. If I feel really, like, I really want to impact a particular issue, I'll work really hard to get on that committee, like, I can contribute in some really detail. We, we can only do so many, like, I couldn't do all the committees, so I'll pick one or two that I'm most passionate about.
What I've seen work really well in the private, we had five subcommittees, all two man, you know, two person groups that would do it, it comes back as less than it. Doesn't come back with someone saying, this is what we determined. It just says, here's what we came up with, here's what we agreed to, and here's what we didn't really have passion either way, but it's, it came up in the discussion. You review it, you ratify it and you say, yep, all heard and it, and it goes on. It doesn't mean you can't say things in any part of the hearing, we're just, just starting the process. Doesn't mean if you come up with an epiphany a month into it and say, you know, I saw something and it was really good, can you add that or whatever, it's just a process. It's, it hasn't. But at least we control some of it mentally by saying, yeah, we had input. Right, we, we, we ask for certain things and I, I think it's helpful. These are the people I keep asking about. It's all, I'm, I'm less concerned about the style of. About possibly about planning.
Meaning over is almost like a friend's.
Yeah, okay.
Like, you know, there's a priority. That's the, the serious substance.
Right, because that's the whole.
How they end up presenting it is, is, um, is important but is very secondary to the philosophy. And, you know, what, what are the bones is
Yeah.
that, that we all agree with, that, that creates the framework development. That's what's important.
I agree with all that. I mean, I definitely think that this firm is capable of all of those things, um, but, um, you know, to your point, it's to you to see, see those pieces, but I definitely think they're capable of doing that. I, um, I do want to make sure there are visual, because I feel like that's where the balls.
Yeah, I'm not saying they're, I'm saying the style of all of that is.
Yeah, yeah. All right, I'll push out, uh, what I have and, um, I'll just ask you, if you can give me, you know, with a week or two, give me your comments, like, and um, try to incorporate it as best I can in there. If there's something that's totally off, we'll come back to next meeting. But if it's, if it's all something that can be incorporated and modified in there and not, you know, um, be sort of personnel changes, then that allows us to keep moving along. Um, and I don't know, maybe it's still an open question, but is there a subcommittee being created? Is there some, there are certain people, um, you know, and disagree with that arrangement? Do you want to, obviously, there's always gonna be an updating of regular meetings is where we are, but.
Can we nominate?
I mean.
Yeah, and, and by the way, Dave, I'd be happy to, to the extent you can do it during daytime, that makes it a lot easier. But you only because of the number of meetings that happen at night, it'll speak up some possible add new ones.
Yeah, I'm always up for design related stuff, especially in design service related stuff.
Good. Jamie's good.
Does three break any rules?
No, that's good, yeah.
Yeah.
So is it, does anybody feel like they're excluded? Is that okay? All right.
The two experts in me.
We already did so. So who is it?
So Brian, Jamie, and Bob. Um, so um, oh, we'll touch base with you guys, more specifically on all these things where, you know, and then again, if you can't make it, well, that's fine. But um especially uh passion, you know, excellent, but first and foremost, um look at the scope, tell me what you think. Um, a couple of examples to sort of like, you know, show us what it's gonna look like, you know, compared to what it could look like. Um, at the end of the day, feedback, what you think, you know, examples like that are great, but um perhaps more importantly, you know, the overall. Approach here and so forth, but I definitely think we're all, I think you and I are looking at the same thing, which is, we want somebody that has the character, not just the architecture individually, but. Um, the public realm is being created, essentially the streets game, the best feeling. That is part of your environment and architect in the back, and, you know, can't do that, they have to be in a better way, I guess.
And, and then anyone else has ideas can follow us, right? So we're, we're just, it's just who's gonna make the, make the.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, the only thing I would say with that is, and I'm, that's something I. I don't want to be the reason why, but it's, it's mechanically, it should come like through the meetings, only because then we're a better one thing, so it's easier if it's the three in between the meetings, and then we're having to group together for those things at meetings. The only thing I'm saying is, like, if you're having emails for it all together, that is.
Not altogether. So what'll happen is, and what I've seen is, whoever leads this, it'll be the focal point for any individual email or input. And then that'll be brought to the subcommittee, and we'll sort it out. So, okay, here was the idea or whatever. It doesn't have to be, it can't be a, can't be a meeting outside of me, you know, again.
Yeah, no, I, I'm just, I'm gonna say that, cause I don't personally, it's not my big chase, I'm not interested in it, but um. It, the serial communication thing where like, well, everybody, you're still a communication of some, something that's suddenly you're gonna be bored.
That's, but if nobody, it's not, it's not serial, but it's all being focused on.
But.
Yeah, then it goes to a subcommittee, and the subcommittee brings it to a board, not as part of the. I think the idea of sending it to one person doesn't break any rules.
I, I don't have an issue with this, dude. I don't have an issue. I'm very comfortable with this. Yeah, I'm perfectly fine. I don't, you know, to me, to get your feedback faster is what I'm.
So, so in terms of the timeline, what are we talking, talking about? So I was just thinking about our January fifteenth meeting, which is, we're gonna be talking about sign ordinance. We have a six C application. Uh, that's all we have right now. We know, should we talk about this at the January meeting?
Most definitely.
So.
That's our first meeting.
That's our next meeting. I was, because our, our regular next meeting is January first. We don't meet on January first.
We're glad to see you guys.
Is this a meeting with the council?
This is just us, just us, yeah. But where did you, where did you leave off this far? Meetings.
You were gonna look at schedules, just think of.
Oh, well, it's so for right now, it's not that we're immediately saying something. It's just that what will happen is, so we'll have, like, depending on what's happening at a given time, you know, zoning changes, permits application, maybe surge, some reason, or big, you know. That's the thing that we can't predict, so that might unfortunately result in us having a conversation where it's like, oh, we're gonna have to modify our approach, won't work this month or next month.
I can't imagine that we're really gonna, that everything is that critical. The very, the only things that are really critical tend to be things that the city isn't. You know?
So it's not a problem.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, it's hard to tell the mayor that he can't come to the next meeting. But, you know, so that's, recreation use, have a good practice, you know, those types of things. The fire station, you know, those things we had to do. But the, I think that the, I just think we can control our agenda.
Again, if everybody's good with that setup, we're just gonna run with that, and every applicant will be advised, those are the dates that are available for them, um and we can go from there. I just want to make sure that, like, so we can proceed ahead and not have to retract again.
I guess I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, if we could load that January.
With the planning, with the planning.
Yeah, we won't kick off that six C since, sorry, in January.
Yeah.
But, but if we load up the planning stuff and tell new applicants, nobody's gonna come in, come in with an application.
Yeah, yeah. So what we'll do is, we'll use the second meeting of the month, that will end up being our.
Is our.
Planning meeting, and the first meeting will end up being our application meeting, and we'll try that in twenty five, see how that goes. He has much done in that format. If we don't like it, we'll just.
Yeah.
Bring it back.
And then, and then what you can do, I've seen that done, is if there's something that's urgent, you can just say, look, we'll take it on in the first five minutes. It's just continuance or something as a timeframe.
Yeah.
Quick actions and, and then you go on to it, but it's not everyone who says I need it, yeah.
Yeah. I, I mean, I love your idea of devoting an entire evening to one topic, or several, I should say, planning topics, long range, because we don't, we're always. Give, devote so much time to these small scale particulars that we can't spend time on this, you know.
And that will help us get to where we need to be, like, in conservative.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, I. Oh, I need you, cause I, other updates, the ADU, we were talking. So the state, the state has issued guidelines for ADU regulations. We haven't read them, and we're interested, feel free to read them all. Um, there's a lot more to unpack in there, but um we're just not sure at this point yet, whether that the council will be making modifications, or we'll take a timeframe that requires to recirculate. We may be coming back and have a first discussion here in this format uh of the zoning court. Or we may see the council take that into it, uh into account and move forward with something based on the information of the state. Um, but I just wanted to give a heads up that we're not on our set short just yet. Um, we just got the new regulations of the state, so we couldn't take it into account before, where we were in our process.
I, I think it's great that we were headed this, I don't think that's a problem, the fact that it's a little more, I'm worried, I, I'm really proud that we're, and we have two councils sponsoring and getting us.
Yeah, I, I am too. The only thing for us is that now, there's a disconnect in the sense that, like, there are some things in there where we left off in our process there, the joint public hearing on November twentieth. That are things that can't, the provisions that are in there, they can't be based on the regulations of the state, so that's the part where people may have different perspectives about each of those things, right? Um, but there's a disconnect between where we left off there and what can actually be in there, and so you provide.
Actually, the, the other thing is, we don't know whether those draft regulations are gonna stay.
That's true, that's true. And those won't actually, they're saying, will probably take effect until essentially the date or day, you know, around the date of the statute taking effect to strike out the things that are. You know, inconsistent, so it's not like, you know, this is chicken or egg kind of thing. There's no perfect solution here.
And the biggest, the biggest thing that we see is the definition of public transit station.
That's the most, the biggest change.
So, so if you recall, the, uh, there's a parking exemption within half a mile of a public transit station. And we limited it to the train station, and they have, the draft regulations say that. If your bus service is a flag service, anybody can lag it down in England, then the entire route is considered a public transit station. So as a result, the half mile radius covers everything in Newburyport, except for like the very southern edge of the Turkey Hill neighborhood. Few, few properties near the Cambridge and stuff like east of Marlborough Street. So it's, it's, uh, so almost the entire residential portion of the city.
So that's.
It's, we have no, which isn't a bad thing, but it's one of the things we discussed, is, you know, that's one of the controversial things.
I, I agree. That's the one that stood out to me the most, just a sort of area, a geographic area that's encompassed not just here, but everywhere, because we were having debates with Bob on the garage downtown. And this is way more sweeping than anything. I, you know, I was assuming that car, the debate would be about concentrated development centers or something of that nature, um and this is a totally different spectrum than that, so. Um, so to be clear, this would eliminate the parking requirement. I mean, that was within that radius, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
I almost, I, I'd argue with you actually about, about ninety five, because it's not a problem when I.
Yeah, sorry.
So I'm cut off.
That, sorry, that ended up being like an automatic gap for the time, yeah.
But everything else, yeah, would be, would have no parking.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't have a, I don't think it's a significant adjustment here, but I can imagine in some places, there's a debate about the, you know, the routes sometimes change. So, you know, um to what degree does that impact? I, I'm thinking more of some other communities than us, you know, basically.
Yeah, it's not gonna start going down Monroe Street.
Yeah.
Looks like they'll pick you up in the morning.
Well, we are getting a ferry.
Yeah, if you put an ADU in the river, there's no parking.
The uh MVPC is, is a contract to design and build an electric ferry, all electric ferry from uh April to Newburyport.
Come on, wow.
It's gonna be a couple of years before they.
Yeah, it's not, it's not uh funding it, construction funding it, that's.
Not operation, but there's, there's construction.
Construction.
It's solar powered, electric. No, no, this is gonna be from the April, so.
Is the idea that there's just one?
It's one, and it's gonna stop at uh. By law, it's just gonna stop at April and Amesbury and Newburyport. Can't go, can't go to the uh, this state reservation because of times. They can't keep to a schedule because of times. So uh, it's gonna, Newburyport downtown is gonna be very good.
That's great. Um, I didn't think, I'm just curious, you know, it could be great, like, the more frequency you have of something that, the more light will become with people.
It's actually, it's actually not, uh, it's neither, it's not an VPC, it's neither.
Yeah, right.
It's not all you're. Do you have an icebreaker? You never know. Powerful engine motors, remember the, they're dirty dogs. Yeah, yeah. You know, this is gonna have to go really fast.
That's right.
Yeah. I've taken, I've taken a. Yankee Clipper or whatever, it's, it takes you about an hour to get to.
Can't anybody rely upon April to Newburyport for their daily commute to there, like I just. But up at tours, maybe something like that, like, I'm gonna take the day and go to Newbury.
No, I'm gonna come to Newburyport, take the day and go to April.
But the opposite.
Yeah. See, oh, yeah, we're kind of, kind of. Okay, um.
Um.
We've been putting this, oh, public car. We know.
I mean that ladder?
Yeah.
No, keep going, I'm sorry, I was just thinking, there's anything else I didn't mention.
So here's a really nice letter from Amanda Zeller, um, and I actually had some follow-up communications with her. And uh. She uh, she was just so, so complimentary. To our process. Need to have it come on. But she just wanted to. To let people know that she is truly interested in understanding the planning process as it unfolds, thoughts, and, you know, not being an ignorant citizen, she says. Um, that was, it was a great, that was great.
I mean, that's probably because you, you had a coherent process, we've got to understand how the process is working, right, to explain to them, and I, I feel like sometimes that doesn't always happen, and the explanation, explanation of the public at the outset. Is helpful, because they don't know how the context we do about how things work, or what the processes go forward and.
Well, I really, I appreciate getting that letter. She's always well. So, the big time has come, the big moment has come. For election of officers. And I really would like enough to be chair next year. Um, so I don't know whether anybody is, is up for the job.
I was trying to say, what can we do to?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, how can we brighten it?
Yeah.
Thank you sincerely, you're a good job.
Well, thank you. I, my problem is I'm doing too much, and I, and I, um. And, off the record, I may. My term expires in April, and I'm seriously considering not reading it. So I, I mean, I still could do it, and I still could do it, but I, what I would like, really like to have somebody. Have experience being chair, if I decide to leave.
Yeah, continuity. By the, by the way, I mean, I just, my vacation, I mean, we, we have, typically, this occasionally is, we typically have a prep meeting, but, you know, the week before, we're talking about the pack, we're talking about this coming in there. Uh, it's mainly just, you know, proper running of the meeting, you know, protocol for things like voting, promoting, you know, stuff like that, so um, you know. Yes, there'll be zoning hearings and things like that, you know, I'm gonna, you know, it's frustrating to be that, but you've seen Rick do a good job of things.
So I think the bar is really high.
Yeah.
Right? I think we all agree, so you, it's your fault.
Well, I've done it, you know, I've, I've done it for so many years, I mean, not just here, but places just, yes, that's kind of a huge.
Well, I agree about it.
Yeah.
Because I don't feel like I have the experience yet. Feel like you guys know a lot. Experience. Sit here. Okay, I would. I vote for you guys.
You've got, you've got real estate back.
Well, you only, you only say, and I've done it before, what it is, is just we'll slow down the procedure to make sure we're on the right sheet of music.
Yeah.
And, and, and just checking in, Charlie, you could certainly do this, honestly, I'm not lobbying for you, but it's just a matter of saying, okay, what is the procedure we're in? How do we take a vote? Procedural stuff, it's not.
Yeah.
Great knowledge of planning, all the rip has that. It's just more like keeping the flow of things going, and then.
Run through the meeting in the agenda in advance, so we've gone through essentially all the procedural things that we're expecting. There's always things that, like, depending on what you wanna do at the end of the day, but. We always have an idea of whether it's continuance possibly, or it's, whatever it might be, we're always going through those, uh, mechanics.
Well, I've also heard Rick go back and forth, like, listen to me. And be able to kind of, you know, gently put them in place, so I feel like it's a bit.
But, but the knack of it will come, because it's, it's, we're all in a, we're in a, either, you know, special permanent hearing, there's a, there's a set of rules for it. And again, I felt the same way, and that was fifteen years ago, but the past chairman just said, no, we're, everyone, everyone can say, oh, no, I don't, check, what are we doing? Which, what rule are we under? It's, it's not really a.
Yeah, it's also.
We're a board of citizens, right? So just inherent in that, we, we're not required to have a PhD in planning, we're not required to have legal procedural. Knowledge, just.
Every chair has their own approach to, you know, and every, and the board might feel differently about whether something's like passionate is to be, you know, argued over too, I mean. Every chair is different, every chair has a different approach to, you know, their meetings.
I think, yeah, that, that is true, it's like, before me, we have men, professional planners, chair.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, uh, you turn it into, I'll say this, if, if nobody is really ready to step up. I would do it, but it might be something, a position that becomes vacant during the year.
So could we, maybe you could agree to do it in the first meeting in January, but we all keep discussing it, trying to.
We can put off the election. I mean, we can either, we can either elect the officers tonight, or we can put it off until January.
I have no, I mean, that's pretty good.
It, it, it just to let you know, the reason I, I can't is something associated, so that there's no.
See, if I resign, then you can become a full member.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're pretty compelling in cares, not there.
Yeah, but he's offered like four months of mentorship to himself.
Should we carry it to next agenda?
Yeah. I mean, if you, if you, we, we want to vote on a chair, vice chair, the.
Yeah, the, the only thing with the, but, you know, vice chair, obviously, we cover typically with the chairs on there, that's the most thing, you can definitely. Uh, participate in the prep meeting to get an idea of the agenda, make sure they've got it closely, you know, there's no surprises. Um, but um, the secretary, the one thing we were hoping to touch, the secretaries and press, words about was, the secretary, it's not really a lot to do as a secretary in a day's, four months, but. We have a template, she would come up with the voting and so forth, we probably may ask the secretary to just kind of help us with, um, key and tally that, because.
And also, most recently, we had this issue that our city solicitor brought up, is we should be reading.
Oh, yeah.
Criteria, that's what I've been asking all of them to do.
Yeah.
Which we're voting for all of these.
He is. He hasn't agreed, he's, he hasn't said he wants to. Right. By the way, uh, my suggestion there was just because I think we can cover the same ground with less time, is, I think if we can, we can paraphrase, as long as we're covering the substance in there, we're good. So, by the way, that could help out, where we're covering the same ground that's been recommended, but we don't necessarily have to re-verbatim what's in there. As long as we've covered the substance, we've covered the legal ground that has been referenced here, so. Anyway, but. I appreciate you mentioning that, because it is, it is helpful, because these people do it for her clients, we should do it for the city, so.
Maybe we should not have her do it for the clients, and her presentation. I would like to have a motion one way or the other. Either to postpone or to nominate.
Make a motion to postpone. We consider January to. What are our selections?
Okay, more favor. Okay, my favorite. Between.
And, you know, Rick, we should let you off the hook if that's yours. It's my thought, as we're sitting here, you know, it's not fair to say, well, geez, no one else, you know.
And, you know, it is, it isn't, uh, I mean, I could, I could do less as chair. It's kind of my personality.
Yeah.
No. So if I weren't chair, I might not feel with the girl.
Can you do co-chairs?
No, you have to have a chair. The, the, according to the city ordinance, you have to have, you have to have a chair in the. Second, we don't even have, the ordinance is not even vice chair.
We could change the, we could change the order, it's not gonna be the whole process. It's like, it's like a joke, I was like, you're gonna change your order today.
Um, I don't know whether you've heard anything, I haven't heard anything about the, the bill in the legislature about associating procedures, anything about that.
I have not, no.
Because there is a bill. You know, there's, then associate member can do anything that a member can't. Right now, the associate member is limited to voting on special purposes.
That's right.
Yeah, so, uh, but, but there's a bill in the legislature basically to make associate member be able to fill in for anybody.
Yeah.
Much better.
Unfortunately, there's always these ties, you know, you, you know, the legislature, there's always these ties built in the regulations, and they end up being so cumbersome for us. They're on, having a broader latitude, and then these sort of slow things that, you know, put them nice, if all the things were consistent, like, number of board members, without your, able to do this or that. Doesn't work out.
Hmm. Okay, any other updates from anybody related to the plan?
If anybody wants to reach out informally, you know, I had a question about the chair, I think, feel free, I can help you with whatever, you know, anything.
Same. Feel free to call. Okay, nothing else? Um, this is kind of a discussion, you know.
Very, yeah. Sorry, you're gonna get them, but it's all except for next year, but that's the nature of.
But we get, we, we get a, a whole meeting on.
Yeah.
Rest up.
Two months in a row, yeah. Balden mentioned, by the way, and he's missed three meetings, and every single meeting he's missed has been canceled. So, if we want, we want to invite him to go on vacation sometime.
That's the thing, yeah, I'm glad to help with that.
That's an amazing gift, yeah.
Well, Balden's not here, it's true.
No one reads mine the way that all of them. No one reads mine the way that you do.
Okay, go for the business of doing, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Is there a second? All in favor? We are adjourned, thank you everybody, have a great holiday.